Okay, we're recording. I'll call this meeting to order. A joint planning and development subcommittee town council meeting. It is Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024. It is 7:13 PM. We're here in the veterans room. It's possible, according to town council, may be present and discuss the agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio methods. Item number one is called to order, and item number two is roll call. Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Citizen member La Rochelle.
Present.
Citizen member Bernadette.
Present.
Counselor Daniels, present. We have 5:00. Everyone's here tonight. Very good.
5:00.
5:00. Item number three, consider and accept the minutes of March 19th, 2024.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
No.
Two abstains? Okay. Any in favor? Two, all three. Okay. Very good. Item number four. With you in discuss, the town manager's appointment of Michael Colagnesi as an alternate planning board member effective immediately through June 30th, 2026. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Manolio.
Yeah, thank you. Attorney Colagnesi, Michael Colagnesi, he's been a long time resident of Southbridge, has been involved in several committees. He had spoken to Michael, Dave Pear, in the planning board. Dave recommended him to come aboard as an alternate because they have a full committee, so recommend him for approval.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item number five. With you discuss to authorize using park grant funding from fiscal year '23 funds to hire Action Environmental Corporation for $17,900 to demolish 76 Central Street and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
The next two items are with PEG. As you know, we took ownership of 76 Central Street as part of the rail trail. And I want to say before PEG gets into the quotes themselves that we should have PEG negotiate all with vendors because she is able to take one that was a lot more money and probably get a half of what it is. So I'll let her talk about the company that she solicited. But I do know on the various iterations of quotes that she had given us, she did a great job and get it down to the best number as possible for the town of Southbridge.
Very good. Ms. Dean.
We started with a quote for $37,000 and $28,000. I used those to negotiate down both of those to $20,000 and then went out for another formal request for quotes. From there, we got four quotes, and this was the one, the second lowest, but that was eligible. The lowest quote didn't include the addendum number two in the quotes that I requested. They are an abatement certified or licensed abatement company. So should any asbestos abatement required? I have a future agenda item that says that they could potentially be one of the companies to do the abatement as well as the demo, which would be probably the best deal for the town. But we have it set up now that they can go forward with the demo once the asbestos survey is complete. Hope that the asbestos surveys comes back with no findings. If it does have findings, then I go out for additional quotes for the asbestos work and either add it to their contract or to another lower contract.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So you said the original, one of them, one of the bids was for $28,000?
And $37,000.
$37,000? How did this get like? What was the big difference here that dropped that amount of money, $20,000?
The initial quotes I went out for included the asbestos survey. I was told by one of the contractors who was considering responding that including the asbestos survey would hold them up from the demo. And I'd said I didn't take that into consideration. I said I would go ahead and I would do the asbestos survey separately, hence that coming to town council is the last meeting. And so I removed the asbestos survey. And I also removed, we worked with the town to, we will provide temporary fencing, we will provide water, and we will, we will waive the permits to try to reduce the costs down, to be able to get this within budget. So ultimately, of course, I'm trying to do everything I can for the tax dollars, but I'm also working within a very finite budget within my grant. And so that's when we got down to the $20,000, and I knew we could actually start to consider that number. Once I got a number that we could consider, that's when I went out for the additional quotes, and then it became a lot more competitive.
Very well. Thank you very much.
I don't know if PEG mentioned this. We are saving money because the most expensive thing is the fencing. And by us, we purchased that fencing back, and we have, and we've used that fencing now in a multitude of different incidents and events. It was probably the best, what, $15,000 we spent on fencing? It certainly assisted us with the contracts.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm sorry. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. On that, you have any allow for future in case something change? Or $20,000, $20,000?
So I do have many moving numbers, moving parts. So I have, I have, we have money for potential asbestos abatement. So that's why I was, I don't have fixed numbers. I have what I think I need to work within to give myself that balance. So I've given myself a budget for potentials.
So you might think, never know, 20 under 50 in the future?
For the demo? That, that would be, you know, if something off the charts was found. Yeah. I mean, and that's what a change order ultimately should be, is something that you would never expect.
But what you allow that company to go up to? Is any allow that be certain budget or not open for them?
No.
Like you come back later and say, oh, you know, we don't have this, we don't do this?
No. Their contract is for $17,000 max.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item number six. With you discuss to authorize using not more than $17,100 in park grant fiscal year '23 funds to hire a licensed asbestos contractor either as a change order to Action Environmental Corporation's contract or to another lesser priced contractor to complete asbestos abatement at 76 Central Street as outlined by Universal Environmental Consultants and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, PEG.
So Universal Environmental Consultants was approved by the town council at the last meeting to do the asbestos survey. As their final report, they will include language that we would be able to take to, for a quote, out to three quotes from, you know, people who are traditionally in the business of. And so thankfully, these Action Environmental Corporation business people are in the business of it, and they could submit a quote for it. That would be, you know, an acceptable potential change order to their contract. And then the $17,000 is basically what I have remaining, that contingency, to be able to get all the work done.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item number seven. With you discuss to authorize entering into an agreement to complete the Safe Streets for All SS4A Complete Streets Planning Grant using $98,000 in Safe Streets for All SS4A Funding, Complete Streets Funding, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to the town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Give me a second.
We have for each minute.
Uh, PEG.
Would the subcommittee consider making a friendly amendment to say, enter into an agreement with BSC Group?
Any objections?
No, I'll make that motion to amend it.
With BSC Group. So that first sentence reads, with you discuss to authorize entering into an agreement with BSC Group to complete the Safe Streets for All, et cetera. Okay. Uh, discussion?
I'll defer. I know we had an RFP. I happily reviewed the RFPs yesterday. It was three respondents that can outline it all.
Okay.
I did my evaluation, however, I couldn't sit in a team meeting because I had another meeting in Cheltenham. But I'll defer to PEG for the results of that.
Very good. Okay, PEG.
So engineering, you typically don't have to go out for an RFP by procurement. Because we're using the federal funds, the Safe Streets for All's federal funds, we did go out for an RFP. It was posted, you know, widely throughout the state. It went out to every transportation engineer registered in combines. So we tried to make it as competitive a process as possible. We only got three responses, and it's the three usual suspects we have in town. It was VHB, Italian Bonds, and BSC Group. They all had strong proposals. Any of them probably would have done a fine job. Italian Bond, some of the language insinuated that there may not be enough funds for everything we were asking for in the proposal, so they scored the lowest. VHB was sort of up and down what the scores were, and BSC Group did the best.
Okay, discussion? Counselor Shania.
Can you, can you enlighten me again about that safe street? What, what are this is about?
Sure. Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg wants to see no fatalities and severely reduced serious injuries throughout the country. The goal for the SS4A Safe Streets for All to improve multimodal transportation in your town. So, you know, how do you share the road with your bikes and your people and your strollers and your walkers? The Complete Streets Agenda at the state level is essentially the same thing. So what we proposed last year was, we're, we've already adopted the Complete Streets policy. The next stage for the Complete Streets is to do a Complete Streets Priorization Plan, and then you can go for Complete Streets Tier 3 Construction, Safe Streets for All. You have to do a prioritization plan, and then you can go for Safe Streets for All Construction. So we said, let's use our Complete Streets funding as the match for our federal SS4A. Combine them together, get a more robust program. So we're doing basically, you know, just a larger scale than the state would expect Complete Streets. We're asking the engineers to do a lot of public engagement. We want as much feedback from the community about where they think things are unsafe and what they would like to see from improvements. And then they come up with their 15 highest priority plans based on the feedback. And then we've asked for big ready documents for a few of the projects to be able to then go to construction. So I really wanted to try to get out of them as much as I could.
So, once this is, this engineering is completed, that's when you're going to go after the grant money for the construction?
Should the town want to go in that direction.
So, in timeframe?
So, the, I've given them until December to finish, but there is, on the state level, there's Complete Streets funding available as of this fall that this engineering firm says that they are willing to hustle to make the timeline forward, to be able to apply within that round. It might be too aggressive, we'll see. But those rounds, they're, I think, the SS4A isn't until next spring. So we would, you know, apply that following year. So this is for no construction, this is strictly an engineering plan.
Uh, Counselor Adams and Counselor McKeady.
So back in 2019, I think PEG just became the CBG coordinator. We actually had a meeting downstairs with Heather, DPW Director, the Assistant DPW Director, Town Manager, and quite a few others, bringing up Complete Streets and Streets for All because they actually gave us more funds to expand our road projects. During that period of time, it didn't go anywhere. And it didn't go anywhere, not because I didn't want it to go anywhere, but it was because our, our past leadership within the town hall didn't want to go. Because it takes a little bit more effort. PEG came along, changed all that. I know Eric worked on a few things as well. I think there was a change in mindset to be able to do this, to expand the funds for our infrastructure road projects that we wanted to get done.
Just kind of fund sidewalks more than any other project.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, Counselor McKeady. Go ahead, Counselor McKeady.
Thank you.
So, BSC, you put out the RFP, and you said for $98,000. So they all knew it was $98,000.
If I may through you, yes, that's a very good point. I was going to mention it, but I failed to. Yes, so the way the RFP works, you have a non-price proposal that you rate as, you know, most advantageous. You know, you have a score rubric. And then you have, then the price proposal that you open after you've done the scoring. And so it was $98,000 for all.
Okay. So then you're going to have a sort of like a poll of residents. What do you want to see fixed in this town? So, what I might think is an unsafe area, somebody else might think is not unsafe. They think their area is more unsafe. So it's just going to be a popularity poll or a type of poll, see how many people think this area is unsafe as opposed to maybe not so many people over here. All right? Is that how it's going to work?
If I may through you, that's public engagement. Everybody bring your concerns to the table. Yeah, then there's an evaluation process.
And, to Counselor Adams.
Yeah.
No one ever did anything with Safe Streets. I don't know, I don't have a big word in front of me, but it seems to me we will. We've been doing Safe Streets for All for the last couple of years.
We have, absolutely, we have. It was in 2019. Because I, I read somewhere about the Complete Streets projects, that how expanded infrastructure work in other towns, that we would be eligible to do something like that. So we actually set up a meeting with Ron and everybody else that was in there just to have a conversation, see if we could do this. And that meeting, it goes so well. I'll just put it that way.
And the last thing is, I want to get a head start on this. If you put a stop on the low lights at the end of North Street, because you can't get out of there. It's 3:00.
He hasn't egressed, he's all the way down. I heard we're demolishing a street on the Korea Ave.
Also, Counselor Rivas.
So you mentioned, is the engineering firm going to be doing the polling and the surveying of the community?
We'll work together with them.
And just thinking about like, a lot of the recent, you know, people saying that they're not always aware of, what are, what are some different ways than the usual ways that we've done, you know, outreach to the community? Are there some other ways that we're going to be engaging the community in this instance? Because the roads are a big issue, streets and safety.
I attended a Complete Streets, like 301. It's all about public engagement. And then I included all the materials from there. There was an engineering firm that put that on, that provided sort of the best practices for public engagement as part of the RFP process, and said that I want that to be the, the guidepost. BSC Group did not ask for as much, or did not provide as much public engagement in their RFP as I wanted. But again, I was trying to hold the bar very high. So even if they are not willing to hold as many public engagements, I am willing to go out there and table, similar to what I did at the community center, right? For the CBG. You know, if we can get out there and table at a grocery store, that's more of a realistic way of getting people's input, right? Somewhere where they have to go. The other suggestion I had was to do something fun on the Central Street parking lot on a Friday night, now that we're seeing more traffic out there. You know, things like that, to be a little more creative.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The unopposed, unanimous, all present. Item number eight. With you discuss to authorize applying for the one-stop-for-broad expression of interest for $2 million to complete roadway improvements for the Southbridge Innovation Center and entertain a motion to the town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion? Mr. Manolio.
I will defer this one over to PEG. PEG has been having conversations, we've had a lot of emails back and forth. Regarding this expression of interest, I advise that they should put a proposal through the Planning and Development Subcommittee to see what the town council's appetite for this is. Am I correct in that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. The history is kind of laid out in the memo for the public. We were asked by Chip to go for an expression of interest in 2021. And then when it came time to apply for the grant, he said, he rescinded his request because he was potentially going to be bringing in a marijuana business and didn't want to co-mingle public funds with marijuana money. So then it fell flat. But during that time, when we did submit the expression of interest before the grant application, the state's response was, this application's too vague, need more details. Please refine your budget to show exactly how the MassWorks money would be spent. And so I keep coming back to WBDC, Worcester Business Development Corporation, who's working on behalf of Chip, to try to get more exact numbers. I'm sure they will perfect them as we get closer. But they're trying to hustle to find $6.25 million to be able to do interior work at the AO. And they're asking for $2 million of it to be MassWorks. So I have no opinion. We don't have any other competing MassWorks requests. We've been incredibly successful at MassWorks applications over the last few years. We went for the MassWorks for East Main Street, safety and pedestrian work, which we're, we're still needing to bid out. We went for River Crane, which we're still needing to bid out. We just got the 100% plans for that. So we're sitting on $2 million plus another 800 million, 800,000 from the MassWorks funds to be used for construction. And so then this would be on their behalf, if the town wanted to go that direction. And this is not an application to, for MassWorks. This is just an expression of interest which, which is sent to the state as a, hey, what do you think of this idea? Can we have the back?
Okay, committee first.
If Brookside Terrace were to come forward and say, PEG, can you help us out with the grant? Would you do the same grant for them?
Yeah.
You would?
I, I, I would not do the grant. I would ask the town manager's opinion. And if he told me to come to the Planning and Development Subcommittee, I would.
Just give me a second here. Okay.
I'm also.
Anyone else on the committee? Counselor Rivas.
So then the funding would come from MassWorks, and there would be no portion like matching from the town or anything like that?
At this time, no. MassWorks is 100% state. And we've done MassWorks, I think we did a MassWorks for United Lens before I came onboard, maybe in 2018?
That was 18.
And that was infrastructure on their property.
Yeah, that addition, right?
Across the street, or on the same street, I think. On both sides.
Anyone else on the committee? Okay, Counselor Shania.
I, I, I didn't, somehow no reason, get the related paperwork to this item. How I got with the agenda, that's all I could break out. So, can you explain what works, including roadway improvements?
So they're saying Mechanic Street and Optical Street drive intersection improvements, new sidewalks and pedestrian connections, interior. Roadway improvements throughout, interior. Funds used to make necessary improvements to internal roadway network to bring them to an acceptable municipal standard as well as incorporate shared bike lanes where feasible. Upon completion of these improvements, roadway and pedestrian network will be continuously maintained at no cost or consideration to the municipality. As a multi-phase project, total proposed cost of Phase 1 of this master plan is anticipated to be $6.52 million. They're requesting Southbridge collaborate on the submission of a MassWorks grant for the $2 million.
Hey, could you send this to me like in the email? So I can have it before midnight?
Yeah, sure.
You, you didn't get the whole?
Oh, yeah, we did that, but it could be, I don't know why. So if I may continue.
Yep.
This is a grant that he's applying for that we have no matching, that we don't have to match anything.
Correct.
And it's going to improve the property at Mechanic in North?
If I may through you, Chair, so that's where I'm trying to hone in on exactly what this $2 million is going for. So if I looked at their budget, you know, it was 925 for this and 1.4 for that. There was nothing that was exactly two. So I don't know which one of these were guaranteed to get done. Say he doesn't get the other 4.5 million, I don't know which ones of those will be knocked on. Yeah. Initially, they had said they would use it to fund repairs to the bridge. And then I think the most recent they said was, it would be for the, uh, was it the Mechanic Street intersection improvements? I will have to look back at whether, but I don't hold them to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guarantee anything specific. And we would need to know that before we went and applied for the MassWorks grant. So you would get a more exact detail if you were going to go ahead and apply to.
So, in the event that he doesn't get this $2 million, say they deny it, if he can still move forward with the $6 million? No?
I can't speak for him.
I, I, I do use the, I do know there was question about whether we would put in for an earmark for congressional discretionary funding on behalf of this project. And I made the decision myself to say no, and we will put in a request for additional funds for the fire station. Because I think that is the priority for the town. I would hope that the council would agree. I would think you would agree with that. So that's where our effort is going, is to fund him for the fire station.
What's that? Counselor Dow.
Thank you.
Good job.
So, he's doing a great job, but he's not committed to his work. Me at the council, I represent most of the people in Southbridge. I'm not going to vote for anything for him to, when he improve, demolish for our citizen. When we approve the first time the apartment, he's supposed to do kayaking, park, playground, walking for the resident, for people there. He never did any of these. So I don't think we should fail in his game anymore, because I see it as a game to get free money, and then he's not committing what he promised us. Thank you.
Ms. Dean.
I, I heard concerns about, for instance, the playground not going in at 5K Street, and started to look into some of the history of what has been committed, what hasn't been committed over the years. And unfortunately, that master plan that he came to the town council with was not, and what you, in some towns, you can get a master plan from the designer or from the developer and accept it as a town. The town council and the planning board can accept that master plan. And as part of that, they are formally accepting certain things within the development that are then easier to get through the planning board later. They didn't do that. They just came to the town and said, this is our ideal. It's not a master plan that you're actually accepting to then be used for, you know, X, Y, and Z commitments. And, and so it was nothing that unfortunately we could hold them to. It was, so they wanted to put forward some of these ideas. They, I guess, had that park grant that they were going to try to go for, but the town rescinded. And then since they have come to us twice asking if we would apply for funds for interior work. So I think that, yes, they are looking for the town to help with public funds to make some of those improvements.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just trying to learn the program.
I understand, but you know, he failed. To me, he failed his commitment to the town and the residents. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor McKeady and Counselor Lozano.
Thank you. Can these funds also be used for our own town roads? Specific roads? If we got a specific road, like for instance, Dennison Drive needs work all the way from South Street all the way up. Dresser Street from here to the high school needs work. There's a lot of roads in this town that needs work. Can this same, one-stop-for-road grant, can this be used on our roads?
Go ahead.
The MassWorks funds are meant to be promoting our businesses. So we had this discussion in last year's Planning and Development Subcommittee. You had initially proposed wanting to do sidewalks in front of businesses. The state didn't think it was a very promising application. We then spun it and did the River Crane. And that ended up being an easy win because it's supporting Dexter Russell, because it's supporting 12 Crane, these other businesses. If you can make the argument somehow that a road that you're proposing is going to bolster your economic development, your workforce, your, or, or. or helps sustain your workforce, then you by all means can apply for whatever you think is appropriate. I'm often trying to think about what those values could be.
Okay, Counsel Lozlo, then Counsel Adams.
Counsel Dow brings out a valid point, whatever the answer is to that, I get it. I'm a big fan of much what the previous speaker talks about. Well, the streets, our streets, not inside a business complex. So for myself, when I see somebody like the on-deck people from the airport.
Flight deck.
I'm sorry, flight deck. When they came out, they're like all skin in the game. It's like you want to deal with people like that that put their own sweat on the line or money on the line. It seems like most of the stuff, they're always looking for something for the government to pay for in the American optical project. Then when we tell them we'd rather not see housing, well, I'm going to go 30B or if you don't give me, well. So I'm like having a tug of war with them. Counsel Dow brings out a valid point that even if it wasn't in writing, they thought they were going to do this, 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 which what we call is sweetening the plot for the town's operation. He's going to put some apartment buildings in there that we're going to impact our services from sewer, water. And you can turn around and talk about police, fire. Has anybody ever given us fire truck or donation, talk, a liveselayer towards the fire department? I mean, we keep giving, giving, giving. Whereas, you know, like they hear about in Worcester, oh, this developer gave so much to this project, whether it be for kids, for families or whatever. I don't see that happening with the American optical. And that's why I'm very concerned with it. I too, you know, I heard all those great things that have been, I was excited. And then when none of them happened, I was like, what happened? Well, now it wasn't in writing, we really signed it. I, he thought a man is word if that's how the operations go. Even if it's on writing, if you said you were going to do it, why didn't you do it?
100 plus per minute, you're right.
Right.
300.
300,000 per minute, he can't do a playground for the kids.
Also Counsel Lozlo. Okay, very good. Counsel Adams.
So, you know, I do, I do support a lot of what the AO has been doing because they redeveloped the entire area. I'm not a, I'm not a big fan, I don't mind affordable housing because I think it's needed. But again, I'll bring up what Counsel Lozlo just brought up, the services issue. I brought that up at the Planning Board meeting. Every time we do some type of affordable housing, we bring it into town, obviously, we're going to need more services. And that includes the schools too, because I think the schools get forgotten about it quite often. And I, my concern here is we're running out of services to provide the increase in population that we've done so far. Not that I'm opposed to the fact that all we have to do is put it to the One Stops for Growth expression. And if it comes through, then we could vote on that as well to apply. I do have an issue. Last year, the council did the same thing. Came up with great ideas at the very last minute when something else, somebody else proposed it. And that fell through except for your thinking and it got Crane taken care of. But the original sidewalk thing fell right through and that was all last minute thinking. If we're going to do the same thing again here, I think it'll fail there too. So I would like to take advantage as much as we can. We do use the property quite often as a public. And no, does it pay for a cop? Nope. Doesn't pay for a firefighter? Nope. It's affordable housing that is putting in. I say give them an opportunity to do this. We should do it. All we're doing is, as far as the Mass Works grant is what your administrator, administrators over it. And really no, no finances off our back at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Arshel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peg, one question, or a couple of questions. If we, if we go for this two-point, whatever it is, and the idea comes up of we need this on our streets because of a business, can this hurt us by the state saying, we just gave you one for the AO? And not give you one for your own streets?
So if I, if I heard the question correctly, if we, if we were awarded the $2 million this year and then next year we wanted to apply for our own grant, would that hurt our chances? I don't think so. The basis of our award is on the strength of the applications. So we've done a good job in the last few years with things that were, you know, the East Main Street was directly tied to the $105 million developed at Southbridge Innovation Center. So they thought that that was an easy award. The River Crane Street, we made the argument of, you know, we're doing rail trail. We've got the, the factory, we've got the, you know, 12 Crane that's next to the rest. All that's being developed, we're, we're complementing the tip project, all that stuff. So we're leveraging other funds, promoting workforce. It's a cut through for many, so all those strengths in the application will get us awarded. Hopefully, we're not penalized because we're getting money here over there.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going. Hopefully, we're not penalized. And if I could continue, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I've attended many planning board meetings, not enough that I wish to, I wish I could do more. But going on what these gentlemen have said, when Phase 1 was approached to the planning board, they discussed a lot of things, like the playground. When I sat in on Phase 3, the planning board is still complaining to them, where's our playground? We'll look into this. When I read my wife's packet, I had some real delight, really went on. Road construction, road improvements, there's nothing in there that says exactly what it is. Because I brought up in the planning board, the infrastructure underneath the pavement was designed for factories, not the housing use. Will it withstand that change of occupancy? And all their people, their engineers and everybody on Skype and on camera said, oh yeah, we looked into it. Well, from what I understand right now, I understand failures, but why? Why is there a septic truck every day down to 5K Street? Because their infrastructure failed. My concern as a citizen and a taxpayer, we embraced senior affordable housing at the Wells Building. Look what we got. Police details. Because they couldn't feel that it was not affordable senior housing. Now it's just affordable housing. The AO complex was supposed to be mixed-use. And that's something that came up in the planning board. The planning board members asked him, where's the mixed? Because we're not seeing any plan for mixed. It's all affordable housing because the state will pay for it. We know the game. My concern with this road, it's very, very vague. Are they going to put in pretty pavement and sidewalks? And then the infrastructure underneath that's happened to us in this town for years, we're going to put lipstick on a pig and dig it up right after we put it in? Because they didn't do what we wisely did on West Street, Main Street, and South Street by replace it all. I got a lot of concerns like what these gentlemen said. Because it's always been a project. And when I look as a citizen and look at a minor thing, they destroyed our sidewalk when they constructed 5K Street and this had to go to council to make them fix it. I had a real problem with that as a taxpayer. That's absolutely a slap in the face and no respect. And I have really big concerns that if we do come up, what if we come up, somebody, the light goes on and in three weeks we come up with, there's a Mass Works things that can go on at such and such a street for business. It could be input business. It could be something up there, whatever. Because we're doing this with that, not allow us to do something for ourselves. We have to start looking for ourselves first. That's my thoughts.
I wasn't sure if I heard the question correctly. So I was wondering if this was your other thoughts. So we can put in an expression of interest for this and then put in an application for something else. This doesn't find us, the actual application's in due engine.
But what does, what? What's, if we put in a letter of interest, does the town have any strength to ensure that the town's wishes are taken care of? Like you say, if he doesn't get money for this, I don't know what he's going to do. Like you say, Mechanic Street intersection, Mechanic North Street, that would be a good thing for the town. But what if he turns around and he doesn't get his other $6 million and puts it to something for his, you know, whatever the road is where he wants to put apartments in? Forget North Street. Is there anything in here that the town can, can have some energy for there?
What I would recommend is that if you, after you get the feedback from the expression of interest, for the grant process, you, you get some concrete details or you dictate, you know, this is what we want to see the funds go for. That would be the approach I would recommend.
What's that? All right, Counsel Rivas.
I have two questions. What would be the impact of this with, you mentioned the rail trail. So how would that impact the rail trail?
I think any improvements in the AO complement the rail trail. Yeah, I think that that's his vision too, is that they sort of, you know, it's all, it's all revitalizing that area and helping to draw people, you know, onto his property or away from his property onto the rail trail.
And then my second question, just about like an alternate plan. So thinking about where, I think the Rise Grant that you talked about. Yeah, for Hamilton Street. Could that be something that this would apply to?
Typically, this is for infrastructure. That might be, yes, if, say, the Worcester Food Hub wanted to apply for the Mass Works grant to be able to construct a building, maybe they could consider that? Yeah. I bet I'd have to look further at the details. Typically, I always think of underground and surface roadwork. Yeah.
Ms. Bernadette.
Oh, I didn't have my hand up.
You did?
No.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you. I think, I think you bring valid points. I think everybody has, even if you're against it or for it. I think one question I did have, and it was brought to my attention, 5K Street and them wanting to redevelop that little area, the entrance and exit. Has there been a survey done on this at all?
I don't know.
Nothing on Mechanic? We don't know anything about that either? Because I know they're doing all the work out there.
There was talk about that, but no specifics in the planning board or one of the meetings.
Okay. All right, because you'd think you'd have something done in those areas if you're going to make those changes. Right? So that being said, again, this is expression of interest. That's it. That's what it is. I may the grant forward. Anybody can bring expression of interest in if they want to bring it in. It doesn't have to, is there a timeframe which doing an expression, can they do it in January? Can they do it in September? Can they do it in?
Only window.
Only window, same time?
Yeah. The window only goes from February to April.
Okay.
And then applications are due in June. And then we do it all over again the next year.
The following year, okay. All right. So there's an opportunity for anybody to put the expression of interest in, right? No, you can have five of them. Yeah, so, you know, I don't see any reason why we can't have this conversation, especially once the application happens, if the application is in detail. Because I agree, there's not a lot on here that's telling us exactly what's happening and what they want to do. But do the expression of interest. And in that meantime, have conversations that you have to show details for this infrastructure work. Because it is going to help out Mechanic Street a little bit for ourselves. Does this have anything to do with bridges or anything as well? Or is it just too expensive for bridges?
Initially, she'd said it would be for the Mechanic Street Bridge, interior bridge. But then when I got the estimates, the estimates show main entrance, 925,000, optical drive roadway, 1.4. Interior improvements, trails, walkway, bike trails, sight lighting, weigh signage, 2.7. And then internal landscaping, 1.5. So could 1.4 for the optical drive roadway improvements include a bridge? That's hard to imagine.
Yeah.
But they don't say what the roadway, if it's.
Yeah, right, right. Again, I don't, I don't have a problem voting yes on this to move it forward, to do the expression of interest. Obviously, the details have to go out there and it comes back to the council to apply anyways. Thank you.
Counsel Shannon.
Going to a planning board meeting, a lot of the things that we talked about tonight have been addressed through the planning board process. Sewer, water, they have to go to the departments to say that if that project is going to be capable of handling, the system's able to handle what needs to be done. Mechanic Street, I believe Mechanic Street, there's a part of that process from the planning board is in there. And there's a lot of, lot of stuff, you have to look at the, the planning board's order of conditions, I guess. Because they've had the hearing, they've closed the hearing, and they've been discussing what those conditions are at a planning board meeting. In fact, they had a discussion tonight. I did have that paper, I looked at it last week and I left it there and I should have took it with me. The thing that we keep having on is, you know, Chip Norton made a commitment to this town for $15 million worth of improvements down at the Rotary, the playground, the kayaking and those kind of things. And those things didn't materialize. But some of those things did not materialize because the town totally didn't have to do it. The playground, for instance. That was, the planning department, the head of the planning, that's no longer here, they ran into a big issue with a gas line and told them they didn't have to put the playground in there. Now, we just recently heard that at a planning board meeting because it was, I for one was kept hopping on it. Jeez, no playground, no playground, no playground. They have committed to building a playground now in an area near that Island Building, whatever, somewhere over there. I'm not sure where, but they said they were going to do it. It might even be in the order of conditions. The thing that we got to look at is that, and I was surprised during the planning board process, is that the investor, I believe, no open numbers on me, over $300 million in the AO complex since he's owned it. And he originally was trying to develop it for commercial space, industrial space, because that's what he had there. He had a, a, a commercial company wanting to come in that was going to hire 200 people. And that company went to Mass Hire and were told that they couldn't provide the workforce. So they pulled out. And that's when the concept started to change to what can we do there? Because he's been aggressively trying, at least he's told us, for the last 20 years since he's owned it, to bring industrial, because that's what people want. But nobody's going there. The buildings are way too old to, to bring in modern stuff today without being costing. So it's easier to sell it off or, like in this particular case, housing. I, I don't, I myself, I have doubts to some of these words. But the thing that happens is, this is like Dave said, this is an application, not an application, but an interest, letter of interest type thing. And if we don't do it, we could get housing down there because we're not at the quota. We're not even there. There's still quite a bit of quota for the 40B housing. We could get 40B housing and get nothing. Very little. And do we get the housing in there where we can, we can go and tell them, listen, you know, you know, you know, services, we're being impacted from the fire, the police. We can ask if he would donate or come up with some kind of seed money to, to help. I mean, if we don't ask, the planning board never asked that. And I went to a lot of the meetings, nobody in the planning board asked for those kind of things. You know, impact, the police have to sign off on the project. The fire department has to sign off on the project, sewer, water. So, I mean, all the things we're talking about tonight have been discussed through the planning board. And they're the powers to be on that project. This, this is just an added possibility of getting some of our infrastructure fixed. Rich, with DPW, we talked about the ground, under Wissing the Ground at the East Main Street. And he said, why is that, that doesn't need to be repaired. Nothing's wrong with it, can handle more than anything. So, you know, it's just, we're going to look at the big picture. It's just a matter, when the final application comes to us, I think that's when the decision should be made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel McKee.
Well, I just wanted to point out that he went after two other Mass Works grants since I've been on the council and failed on both of them. And then it wasn't that all even out, change it to something else. We lost those grants. That's how I recall them. And so that's why I find it harder to go with another Mass Works grant. That's how I recall them, and so that's why I find it harder to go with another Mass Work grant for him. And he's failed twice before. I did, I only asked the question, can we use the funds on those other streets? And they could answer the question, but there are other streets in this town. West Main Street certainly needs some, you drive down to the block there, and you're going to hit some pot holes that are as large as your car and deep, so, and those are health businesses. I just think that we should use the money from the town, and that's all. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Loza.
I always got a tug of war over this, whether it should be residential or industrial. I work in a town like Way Mass or Warren Mass, through old buildings, they're falling down, they say, and all that. But they're all full of businesses, three floors high. And then I go to a planning board meeting, and they say, we need mixed use because nobody wants to be on the second or third floor. I beg to differ. I'm going to disagree. I think that if the hook is out there to bring people in, they will come in. And if it's built with freight elevators and stuff like that, I wouldn't have a problem getting a grant for a freight elevator for a business, because you're producing jobs. The number one thing that the AO does not want to do is an impact study. Impact study, you think about that. It's not written in anywhere, in any ways technically, Dan, do this. We already had the hearing. I heard all that from the planning board. But if you had an impact study, you could actually say, what is the impact on our fire department? Police, sewer, water, schools. Nobody wants to hear any of that. Let's just build housing. And the thing is, I'm not, I just think there's got to be a balance. And I don't think the state figure on what balance is, is correct. I think they're incorrect. And I think we as a community, putting Southbridge first, you can drop around Southbridge. And I did point out as many streets as everybody else has, that we should be spending our money on ourselves. And that's what I'm going to let it, just lie there. No impact study, no, what are we going to be when we grow up? I'm sorry, I can't go along with it. Thanks.
Greg.
Yeah, just to clarify with the order, it's not the order conditions, that would be the con con. The planning board conditions are under legal review right now, so they haven't been set in stone. But the traffic study says there are improvements to Mechanic and Optical Drive now. It's when the building's at ninety percent occupancy, then at that time, there'll be a traffic study to see if there's impacts and whether it needs improvements. So I don't know that that's going to be happening with it. And then just with regards to revenue, so I know that the town passed, waived the permitting fees for 5Ks. It's part of an impact study, would show sort of the ins and outs. And so some of the ins at least are estimated to be about half a million in permitting fees for twenty-five and for forty, fifty optical, and then about an increase, net increase of about a hundred thousand for each of the three developments, so another three hundred thousand per year in taxes. So, and I know that that's obviously not an impact study, but that's just a little piece of the equation at least.
Okay, let's start to wrap this up. Let's do our show.
I was at a meeting that was very interesting, because it was not an impact study on traffic. But on Phase Three, they did a traffic study. And then when Mr. Lloyd was sitting there and looking at the traffic study, it was done during COVID. So the question was brought up then, how accurate is this traffic study? So I have a very big, we need to have the impact study with everybody that's got a vested interest. At the same time, because of the schools, the infrastructure and everything else, their infrastructure might be fine, what's happening to ours? And there's a lot more to the pie, and we keep finding little slip-ups here and there all the time. And I've lost my confidence in what they say.
Okay, I know you want to wrap it up. That's why I recommend you put the request in in between time, before the application comes out. Say you have to apply for this period. You have conversations with the owner. And you have those conversations, understanding that possibly the town council will not vote in favor of something if you don't do this A, B, or C. Obviously, there's legal ramifications, we've got to be very careful about it. But you have that conversation with the owner. It happened a couple of years ago, where the planning board, the fire department, and all that kind of stuff sued Franklin Realty, right? But there was no conversation in between time, because three out of the five things they got sued for would have been taken care of and done by Franklin Realty already, right? So you had two items. There was no conversation had, and if he's able to bring in jobs, he's able to fix some of the infrastructure work that we have and do this, it's a no-brainer whatsoever. But that's my recommendation. We have time to have a discussion with the individual or individuals to get more of a clarification on this. Yes, they should have brought maybe a better piece of paper in front of us. But at the same time, give the person an opportunity. Town council could always say no. That's all my recommendations.
Quick rebuttal.
Sure. Okay.
The piece of paper that was handed is, we're even saying it's not enough information. But this is the way it's been run since we started with Franklin Realty. It's halfway in and halfway out. Waive the fees, and I'm not going to do this. It's like kneeling jello on a tree. It just don't seem to come together.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, I got to ask one question. If you want me to go.
Of who? Who are you asking of?
You.
Okay.
This grant, maybe, I don't know if you could answer it. I don't know who could answer it, but this, this application
Yep.
is requested, is a, is a application requested by a business. Am I correct?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's one of my sticking points for any application is, I need to feel a very clear sense of control over the project and understanding of what it is, because the town's responsible.
Right, but it's a grant, it's initiated by a private business.
The town.
The town, the private business comes to the town. So what I'm saying is, you said that any business could apply for this grant. So Duncan Donis wanted to fix the front of their facility, out there, sidewalk and all that. You, they could, they could apply for this also.
They could come to the town, and if the town so chose.
So there's no limit on the amount of Mass Grants that could be issued technically or?
One a year.
One a year. Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, I think it's time for a vote. All those in favor? Those against? Three to two, the motion passes. Very good. Item number nine, review and discuss authorizing a new revolving account, Commercial Loan Revolving Fund, which shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2023, for use by the Economic Development and Planning Department as a separate account and credit to the fund of all the ARPA commercial loans charged and received by the department in connection with the ARPA Commercial Loan Program, and incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Commercial Loan Revolving Fund up to one hundred thousand dollars for zero percent commercial loans in accordance with Southbridge's ARPA Commercial Loan Program. Office supplies, advertising, and any expense related to the collection of funds in connection with the ARPA Commercial Loan Program, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
Sorry, so moved.
Second it.
They have such an awful language.
Who put that together?
I did.
Okay, uh, well, you did it, you started it, you finished it.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, I think we worked with Dean on this as well
Okay.
to put together the revolving fund. These usually get reauthorized every year at budget time. So this was just allow us to set this revolving fund up, and then we'll have the proper language when we set it up at the council meeting for the chapter forty-four, fifty, whatever, fifty-three and a half, to establish revolving fund for the purposes of ARPA revolving fund.
So it was you, Dean, and Peg?
Uh-huh.
It was you, Dean, and Peg that?
I didn't draft this language, but yes, we all worked on it, yes, in a roundabout way.
No one's claiming that. Okay.
Yeah, because let me tell you, Dean gets very technical at times.
It looks at, uh, any discussion on the committee? Folks. Councilor Mechanic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions for clarification. You can use ARPA money revolving fund, revolving fund to get value to the asset.
Well, revolving fund is you can see that account with money, and by nature of it, use it as, take money out, put money in, and then you just reuse the same amount. So the ARPA fund, from my understanding, because it was a recovery act, it was to spur recovery, economic recovery. Part of that was, let's activate some businesses and give them a loan program. So that's why we have it, and that's why it's going to be revolving fund. It's a great idea, actually, to, we have three hundred thousand dollars, that was federal money, that we're able to just keep turning over as long as we keep getting the money back.
So it's part of this document sent out on page twenty, there is a chart that is unreadable. It's unreadable to me. Matt sent me the replacement chart, but it doesn't look like it's the same chart to me.
So if I may, through you, Chair, I was with Matt, and I pulled it right out of the chapter forty-four, fifty-three, E and a half, the DOR guidance. There's a chart in there, and that's the exact same charter, or the exact same chart, which is exactly how we drafted the language for the motion, was making sure that we met each column's requirements. So yes, you have the exact same one.
Now, what he said to me when you were with him is not the same that's in this agenda. The one that you said to him, to me, through him, is something about revolving accounts in the town.
Okay.
It's not the same one, but I just was wondering what, what this chart is.
So I will, I will resend it to everyone, so I'll send, it's the, so under the revolving fund, there are different statutes. You can do it for water, for sewer, for departmental programming. This one falls under departmental programming, so if you were to search under the DOR for this legislation under departmental spending, then it says, you know, you have to use it for an established program. You have to use it for, you know, X, Y, and Z. So we meet all the marks. And then specific to the question about, can you use ARPA funds for a revolving loan fund? We did an excellent job last fall of writing this program so that it met all of the ARPA legal requirements, and then we vetted it through an attorney to make sure that we were doing everything we were supposed to. So as part of that, the ARPA Commercial Loan Program, when you all approved it, the language in it says this money will go back into a revolving fund for future use.
So then, chapter forty-four, fifty-three, E and a half, well, interest from revolving funds goes into the general fund. So what are you going to do with potential interest from this revolving fund?
There is no interest, because it's a zero interest law.
Well, when it goes into this fund, revolving fund, the money's going to be in a fund. And if that fund makes some kind of interest, then that money goes into the general fund. According to that Mass General Law that I was reading there.
All right, well, I'll verify that. Well, I don't question your interpretation. I'll ask Dean about how that works.
Right, yeah, right. That's what I wanted to know, if that's how it's going to work.
If that's what the law says, then that's the way it's going to work.
We could choose to put it in a non-interest bearing account, but why would we do that if we could end up getting the interest? Yeah, that seems beneficial to the town. Good point.
And then finally, and I, I don't mean to say, to sound anti-business, but a zero percent loan is, I think you should try it. I mean, come on, come on, at least one percent or maybe even two percent. You wouldn't even be able to get that at the bank, so zero percent just doesn't seem right to me, I think. You should at least charge something on that. Plus, that's my own opinion. Thank you. Most of.
It's not a handout, it's a hand up. It's still a loan on their part, so, yeah, we're just allowing them the.
Okay.
And ultimately, if they default, the lien goes on the property, and when they sell, we get the money. One way we're getting the money back. I think it's a good, I get your point, but I think it's a good, like, opportunity for a young individual like that came last week that wants to put an elevator in and everything, that
That's true.
he's trying to reactivate that building and keep that building on its tax rolls. And it's less of a payment that he can then reinvest in the building. That's the way I'm looking at it. As opposed to somebody that's a deep pockets, you know, those were individuals that started out, that are trying to reinvigorate Southbridge, and a local kid that says, hey, I want to do this, and, you know.
I see your point, I hear your point.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Hey, I hope that recorder worked.
Right at that time.
Okay, all right, Councilor Shain.
Just one question. Jack, doesn't revolving accounts, don't we set the dollar in revolving accounts each year?
Yeah, the max will be three hundred thousand.
So.
A hundred thousand? Hundred thousand.
Right, so that additional funding, I mean, that revolving account doesn't go to?
No, it doesn't go out in cash.
So the interest that earns comes to the general fund anyways.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was wondering.
Okay.
I'm going to have it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None of us are present. Item number ten, review, discuss, to dedicate the three tables adjacent to one central to Honest Town Eats for the purpose of outdoor dining upon proof of insurance, entertain a motion to town council for approval. Have a motion. And a second. Uh, Mr. Manager.
The owners of this establishment approached Peg about the possibility of allowing that to activate some outdoor dining. I'm going to bring it forward for your review. I think if you look, you look out there, that, I mean, there's Central Pizza has the ability to have some outdoor dining now. And, you know, I think that pedestrian plaza will just activate that whole area once they get that building next door, hopefully. You know, perhaps that could expand if they put a restaurant in that first floor there, that we look to expand that outdoor pedestrian for additional seating for anybody in that area. But you look at that vision, and I hope you see that it's got a lot of vibrant opportunities.
All right.
I just have one question. The tables belong to the town, though. If the building gets sold, Honest Eats leaves?
It's just reverse. They just have the, we just allow them to use it.
Okay.
It doesn't become their property.
No, okay, that's another question.
They keep it clean, they're responsible for putting the umbrellas out, taking them down. We're just allowing it.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have a question on that, maybe just a little more technical. If we're just temporarily allowing them to use it and dedicate it to them, shouldn't we just say temporary? Or some type of other wording instead of dedicate, because once you say dedicate, it's dedicated. So it's theirs.
To temporarily allow?
Temporarily allow.
Sure, I'll take that as a friendly amendment from Dave.
We'll make that friendly amendment, though I didn't make that motion at all, though. They've been around the question now. No, we're all good.
So, Chairman, so it's a vote to allow?
Temporarily allow.
Temporary or some other maybe wording that'll.
It's not theirs.
I think in the memo, it does say allow, but it's different in that motion.
Yeah. Yeah, please consider allow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two allow, three tables.
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't even think you have to say temporary, it's just we're allowing them to use it.
Okay, so you'll make that change for the, thank you. Okay, uh, further discussion up here? Councilor Shain, yes?
Kind of have a difficulty supporting that, because you go to Central Pizza, they pay to have tables at their property, not the town. And what concerns me is the fact if somebody from the street decides to go sit at that table and bag lunch, are they going to get tossed for somebody at Honest Town Eats deals? That's, that's just my, my kind of, my concerns, but I, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to start the habit of town providing dining spaces for a business unless we do it for everybody. That's my difficulty.
Okay. Uh, okay.
If he goes forward with the liquor license, I'm not sure how it works, obviously, that's not my department, but I think he will have to cordon off the space with some kind of fences to go in and out. And so, yeah, so I don't know how easily it would be for the public to just meander it. But, I mean, people have outdoor seating all the time that someone might come sit at after hours that they can't necessarily prevent. And then with regards to the, who we've helped, who we don't help, we have supported all of the Central Street parking lot businesses as much as we can. We invested in the Central Street parking lot, we gave them the awning in the back. We paid for the wrought iron fencing behind for their dumpsters to be able to clean up that space. We've paid for Twenty-Two Hamilton to help with their dumpsters, to put up the laundromat signs and do new awnings there. You know, as much as we can, we want to see all of them succeed, right?
Right, and if I may continue, I agree with that, but I also, that project, that was built for the use of the public. The whole area was built for the use of the public. So now we're not going to allow the public to use that, we're going to allow a private entity go there, make money from it, and stop. We're going to allow a private entity go there, make money for it or from it, and stop Joe from coming in there with hamburger and eat from somewhere else, you know what I'm saying?
Charles's coffee.
If I may, so the map shows um there are three on his side of the fence that are adjacent to his building where Fidel's used to have all their outdoor seating. And then there are two on the other side of the fence. And the town actually made that decision in the design process. Uh, we were going to construction and I think Heather and I were looking at the site furnishings and how things worked best and made the decision to put two of them on the other side of the fence and leave three on the inside of the fence. So there's still two that are open to the public. And then those two are the ones that have umbrellas. The three that are on the inside, they don't have umbrellas. And so those would be his. So we would still have seating for the public. So those have the umbrella tables and then, and then they have lots of benches.
That's all right. Just, they could put a sign there saying H D E only, right there. Hopefully, Scott doesn't show up with his coffee.
If you're gonna be pro-business, allow it, allow it. It's three tables, four tables. It was always there before. And I think that this restaurant has taken off in a good way. And I think they're very responsible. And I, I personally think it's a big plus when you can go out like in Buster Bar and, and, and go out onto the sidewalk or if it's large enough or the dining area outside. I mean, it's, it's always nice if you have your own land. When you're a landlocked building, which I own one, you know, you're basically, if you don't, if I didn't build a patio over the river, that house would not have any outside.
You know what, just to pacify the things like George is saying, if any barriers are put out, they're only put out during business hours. When Home Town Eats is closed, take the chains down and then if there's a band or whatever, the whole spiel is open to the public.
We can't be confused, people. Either or.
Chair.
Never gonna finish the role.
Sin, sin kubaya. Councila Rivas.
Um, now, we have two on the other side. Is there, are we able to maybe add some more seating on the other side so that we can sort of balance out and create more seating for, you know, for residents who might come to a concert or whatever and, and not impinge on the business?
Should the town ever want to go forward with a project like that? Sure, but you'd have to go for the funding and construction.
And, and do we still have concerts? Like, are we still going to have the, the C D V D, like, concerts on that, in that Central Street Plaza area?
Um, I, I have not asked for any more funds to fund concerts. I think that what we were trying to do was activate the space, help people visualize what it's like to be down there, try to induce a little bit of life, and I think it's happening. So I feel like we can step back a little bit at this point. What I've heard is from some of the local businesses that they may want to bring in some activity. I heard one of them talk about maybe wanting to do a, a, maybe like a street fair or something, you know. So I think that the businesses hopefully will start to make that, yeah, make those things happen. Which I think is the way the town would want to go, right? Yeah. We, we, we don't want to expand our services. We want to promote the town, but then be able to back off a little bit. Thank you.
Very good. Council Dara.
Thank you, sir, for you. That's a great idea. But I have to be, because if you're gonna get approved with the liquor board to be able to serve liquor outside, I have to be, you're it. I think if the town own it, he has to add a policy for any uh risk of fall or sewer to protect the town. And if you gotta do that, you know, give it them for zero amount, at least put something saying he's responsible for any damage of town property, you have to maintain him and keep him in good shape. But regardless of that section, I don't see anybody sitting on it, to be honest with you. No public, no party, no, nothing. Nobody sit there. So it was only one time, guys on the dock, and maybe one person sit there on those outside seating. So it's a great idea. I'm with all of you to just protect the town from any lawsuit or the equipment or the seating, you know, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved. A second.
Not yet.
Kathy. All those in favor? unanimous of all present. We are adjourned at eight twenty-seven.